We're going to begin with, Heather, if you could, give us an overview and then introduce our two new team members, and we'll have them give a quick introduction to the council and those in hearing council chambers.
Thank you, Mayor Lewis. Mayor Lewis and council members, you may recall that we have recently instituted a Native American Management internship program with the town. We're very excited. We have been recruiting students that are interested in learning from local government and pursuing a career after graduation, working with Native American communities. And we went through a pretty extensive application process. We had about 15 really qualified students, and we got down to our top two, and we decided that we just couldn't decide between them, so we thought we'd bring them both onboard. And we have Cole St. Arnold, who is going to be working with Parks and Recreation, and we have Laura Medina, and she'll be working with Intergov and Budget. And Mayor Lewis, with your permission, I'll just invite them up to give you a short bio about themselves.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. My name is Cole St. Arnold. I'm a member of the Hickory Apache Tribe, and I'm currently studying my Master of Public Administration degree, concentrating on nonprofit administration at Arizona State University. I did my undergraduate at the University of Colorado Boulder. I lived in Colorado in the Denver area for just about 10 years, came down to the Phoenix metropolitan area, and I'm looking to continue working with Native American communities after this, either in a nonprofit capacity or in the public realm. And I'm honored and fortunate to be working with the town of Gilbert, and I'm looking forward with the work that we're going to do in the coming months. Thank you.
Cole, thank you. Welcome. Laura?
Ani, or hello, Mayor Lewis and council members. I want to say my guevara, thank you for allowing me to work with this great town of Gilbert, as well as allowing me to enter in here and observe how the town of Gilbert operates, which is something I'm very interested in. I am an American Indian Studies master student, focusing in tribal leadership and governance. I got my two Bachelor's of Science degrees in American Indian Studies and Sociology. I was born in New Mexico, the Santa Fe Indian Hospital. I was raised on the Fort McDowell Reservation. I'm enrolled in the Grand Travers Ban of the Ottawa and Ojibwe Indians up in Michigan. And my interest is, of course, in our governmental relations, as well as conserving Indigenous ideologies and knowledge. Thank you.
What was the very first word? It was hello in?
Ani.
Ani.
Which is hello for Ojibwe.
Okay. So, Councilmember Taylor, when I walk up to you and say, "Ani," you'll know what that means.
We also adopted the French word "Bonjour," so we say "Bonjour" instead of "Bonjour."
Great. Thank you. Dawn, we have another team member that we need to be introduced to.
I have. Good afternoon, Mayor and Council, Dawn Irvin, with the Office of Management and Budget. I'm really excited today because, as we've been working over the last three years towards what we can call our performance optimization, we've been looking at best-in-class all lines of service and ways that we can go about that, we're really taking that next step with the position that council approved last year. With the Office of Management and Budget Coordinator position, we are looking to implement some additional steps towards performance optimization. So, what we're looking at, we're going to be moving forward now with a lean Six Sigma approach that's going to allow us to look at process improvements, make sure that we are really and truly best-in-class and as efficient as we possibly can. So with that, I am very honored to present to you this afternoon Amber Costa, and I'm going to let her do a quick intro.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. I was not prepared to speak, but I'm very honored to be here with you today. I came from Peoria, where I spent about seven years with them. I was in the Budget Office, Economic Development, and I also spent some time in their Finance Department. I have my Bachelor's in Psychology and Master's in Business, and so I'm very excited about this new opportunity and to be onboard with this great organization, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else in council chambers on our town team that we need to introduce? So, I guess one more item on our Item Agenda 26. Let's see, this happens to say Spark App League. Oh, this is really nice. I was given this special gift that we put on the back of a cellphone. The council members didn't get one? That is just appalling. Of course, we would want to share this with you. Maybe we better have someone come up and tell us what this is all about, and they might be willing to share what we put on the back of our cellphones, and then we can wipe off the screen. Yes, please. Jennifer, what is this all about?
This is a secret recording device. This is Vanessa's.
Sure. Thanks, Mayor, Council. This Friday, we are launching our Second Annual Spark App League. We've had a tremendous turnout thus far. We have over 230 students participating, which is very exciting. We only had 75 participate last year, so this is a pretty big increase for us. And we'll be launching at ASU Polytechnic Campus, so I invite you to come out and see what's going on. Those students will learn about design and implementation of building a mobile application, and then they'll be challenged to build a mobile application for the Gilbert Fire and Rescue Department. So, this is a three-month-long process kicking off Friday, and then the award ceremony will kick off, or will happen on May 1st. So, we'll be sure to keep you updated throughout the process as the students are building their apps.
Thank you. So, ignite, excite, and then launch?
Then launch.
Okay. Thank you. To the council, I have three more Agenda Item 26 items, but I think I'll wait and do that at the end, and I'll get back to a systematic flow. We have two council members who are joining us by phone, Councilmember Vice Mayor Eddie Cook and Councilmember Jordan Ray. Welcome, and we'll, anytime that you've got something that you wanted to say or questions, just jump right in. And we will begin with Agenda Item Number One, which is a review of our Thursday night Town Council meeting. Several, well, there are two assignments. Not a lot of assignments, but two assignments. Councilmember Daniels, if you could accept the assignment to introduce the scouts. Councilmember Taylor, Agenda Item Number One is the recognition of the Martin Luther King celebration. And we will have the winners of the art contest and also members of our Human Relations Commission. I'll help, but we'll have you take the lead. And so, if you could tell those in council chambers on Thursday night a little bit about what happened on our celebration, and then we'll help introduce our winners and also HRC. Thank you. And consent calendar. I'll see if council member has some items. I know that we did want, by request of other council members, number 19 under the public hearing, we will bring up, but prior to 19, other agenda items you wanted to have discussed today in the study session? 18? Okay. 18. Two town manager bands are the two items related to St. Xavier University, and maybe I just insert quickly one of my three items on 26 that I was going to wait till the end. Next Wednesday, we do have a special event with St. Xavier University. Why don't I have a town manager give a quick update next Wednesday, what will be happening, and then the consent calendar items, anything the council should be aware of today? Please.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. Next Wednesday, we will have the official site dedication for St. Xavier University's campus in the Heritage District of downtown Gilbert. We'll have the majority of the executives from St. Xavier University, including their president, their provost, their CFO, as well as several of their vice-president-level individuals, and I think some of their Phoenix-area alumni have invited to the event, as well as Bishop Olstead from the Phoenix Diocese, to officially dedicate their site and kick off their foray into our downtown and into our community. This Thursday, we'll be asking you to take action on contracts to retain the architect for the project, as well as the construction manager, project manager for the project as well.
Thank you. For our study session, council members, any questions on those topics? Thank you. And so, prior to 18, Agenda Item 18, anything else? Councilmember Peterson? So, Agenda Item 18.
Mayor, do you mind if I jump in on?
Please.
Nice to meet you, Justine.
Hi.
It's good to put faces and names together. Maybe she should introduce herself, too.
Hi.
Well, please.
Good evening, Mayor Lewis and Council. I'm Justine Bruno. I am the management intern in the town manager's office. I'm here, I'm going to pull up my presentation. I wanted to give you an overview of the mobile food vending ordinance. So, what I'd like to do is introduce our current regulations, the peer cities research we did in draft ordinance, the contents of the ordinance itself, the fire regulations, and the fees. So, the need to, excuse me. Oh, there we go. Perfect. Okay, so the need to develop the ordinance came out of conversations that the town had had with one of our vendors. He had expressed a little bit of frustration in receiving confusing direction from the town in regards to what type of permits or licenses he needed to operate in the manner he wanted to. So this prompted staff to look into what the regulations we had in place for the mobile food vending. And what we found is that if you are a mobile food truck, you can operate in two manners. One is with a special event permit, and that's for vendors seeking to operate once or twice a year, usually in association with a festival or a special activity. The other way to operate is with the transient merchant license, and that ordinance was developed for a variety of reasons. One of them was for selling food items, but it also allows for peddling and solicitation and seasonal sales, so it was kind of created with a wide umbrella. And when we were looking into the transient merchant license, we realized that there were some areas that were overregulated, that were a little restrictive for the food truck industry, and there were some aspects which were not addressed at all, and that's the fire safety regulations. So this prompted us to develop a mobile food vending ordinance, and what we did is we selected four cities. We wanted to kind of compare. We chose Austin, Texas, Denver, Colorado, Raleigh, North Carolina, and Phoenix. And what we did is we looked at the regulations they had in place in order to kind of develop a best practices list and kind of customize and build an ordinance that would work well here for Gilbert. So staff got together, and after we developed this kind of key components, we wanted to receive some outside feedback on it, so we formulated an external stakeholder group that included members from the Small Business Alliance, it had downtown restaurant owners, members from the Redevelopment Commission, current vendors in Gilbert, as well as members from the Phoenix Food Truck Coalition. And overall, the feedback from them was fairly positive. They didn't find the components of the ordinance, the proposed ordinance, to be too restrictive or too burdensome. They found the fees to be relatively appropriate. So after we received their feedback, we made a few tweaks to the ordinance, and we developed the mobile food vending ordinance. It differs from the transient merchant policy in a few ways. One, we define mobile food vending activity to include the sale of food and non-food items. This is to allow for any kind of growth or trends in mobile vending. Some are indicating clothing and shoe sales, as well as spa services. So we want to allow the industry to grow a little bit without having to go back and change the ordinance to accommodate any new trends. We also eliminated some of the restrictions. The transient merchant policy prohibits vendors from operating within 300 feet of a public park or 300 feet of a school. It requires them to be located adjacent to an occupied commercial storefront. It also requires them to move locations. They cannot repeat a location within a seven-day time period. So we found that those restrictions were overly burdensome, and what we did is we removed them, so there are no distance requirements, there are no restrictions on hours of operation. They don't have to operate in a specific zone, or they're not prohibited from doing so. And we also added regulations to address environmental concerns like trash. We asked vendors to keep the area clean and free of waste and debris, and to not dump in the town dumpsters unless they have paid for the services. We also asked them to be mindful of the town's good neighbor principles, which essentially say, keep Gilbert clean, safe, vibrant, be respectful of public and private property, be, you know, a good neighbor, be responsive to citizen complaints and concerns. We also addressed fire regulations. We work with Dan Dubois, and we wanted to determine the best way to regulate the industry. And what we have found is that other valley communities require most trucks to have a suppression system in place. The issue with that is suppression systems are, can be kind of costly. They can run upwards of a few thousand dollars to have one installed in the truck. So a compromise that we came up with is the minimum distance requirement. If you do not have a suppression system installed in the vehicle, we ask vendors to be, maintain a 10-foot buffer, and that's bumper-to-bumper, side-to-side, and that's from any other property line, combustible material, other trucks, in the event that a truck were to catch fire. We don't want it to ignite another vehicle or another piece of someone's property or so forth. So we do that, and we also have reduced the inspection fees for fire if you do have a suppression system in place. So if you do not have one, the annual inspection fee for fire is $50. If you do have one, it's only 15. So again, we want to encourage vendors to be mindful of the safety regulations. We encourage them to have a suppression system, but we're not going to make it a hardship and make it difficult to operate in Gilbert by requiring that. Lastly, we have the license fees. It's $55. It's the current fee for the transient merchant license, which is its equivalent with a broader definition, and it's really just to cover the staff time associated with processing the license and the permits. If you have any questions at the time.
Thank you. Councilmember Daniels?
Thank you. And we got to talk, and she educated me on, I was curious about how we licensed them before, and you've been very thorough about that. Just those two questions that we were going to touch base on and didn't, and that was my fault, not yours, but just on the sound portion of it, Section 14-139, it talks about unlawful noise, and I felt like it was excessive. Can we just say you have to comply with our town's sound noise ordinance?
Right, and I had spoken with Mike this afternoon about that, and the way that we are actually, it reads, after looking at it closer, is those provisions, you know, the honking, the loud radio, the shouting, that applies to public property. And the "or" in that statement makes it, makes the second half applicable to private property. So the private property really just adheres to the regular noise provisions that we've already established in 4261 of the code, where if you're on public property, we're going to say, please don't, you know, do these following items.
But our sound ordinances apply to public and private property, right?
They do. It's, I think it's just an additional protection for public property, and also the sound ordinance measures sound in decibels, and it's hard to measure some of the other sounds, not, you know, they would not be in decibels. We want food trucks to be selling food. We don't want them shouting intermittently or playing a loud radio or yelling, "Come get your tacos," or, you know, something like that. So we're trying to be...
I feel like that's part of a food truck's appeal, though, is like the noise and ambiance. I mean, I've been to food truck Friday in downtown Gilbert. I've experienced it in other communities, too. I hesitate to add, and, this is unenforceable as well. I mean, that's the other aspect of it, is it really is unenforceable. What are we going to do? Our officers don't carry decibel meters. They ask people to be quiet. If there's somebody at a food truck event and they're upset about noise, they're probably just not going to come back to the food truck event. But that's generally part of the appeal of it. So I understand the effort to put it in. I just see it as being excessive, going above and beyond our current noise ordinance.
Sure, and one other point to consider is because we're not going to regulate this by zone, they could be very close to a residential property, so we do want to consider some of the other ways that they could be emitting noise that might be disruptful. So these are just some of the other elements to add, and like you said, it is difficult to enforce, but it helps if we have it in the ordinance to say, you know, these are the provisions you're supposed to be adhering to.
Mayor, members of the council, and if it's preference of the council, that can be adjusted and changed, such that that can just enforce the town noise.
I think it's just when I read it, it's like, no shouting, no, and I was reading it and going, really? I mean, we're going to tell people they can't shout while they're selling food? You know? I mean, we wouldn't do that to a business, brick-and-mortar business. We wouldn't say, "You can't shout in your kitchen," right? Of course, it's not emanating outside into the air either, but I just, I wonder about sort of sticking it to...
Is there, may I just ask a follow-up? Just, we do have restaurants and others with drive-throughs, and there are speaker systems and that kind of thing. Do we kind of have something in the code about how loud those, how loud those can be?
Mayor, Councilman Cooper, we do not.
Okay, all right. Just the noise ordinance? Okay. Yeah.
So it sounds like we may have a council that would be okay taking that out. We do need some noise. I saw the ice cream trucks are in here, and we need that noise so we know to go outside and buy ice cream. Okay? Councilmember Peterson?
I think that's a great comment by Councilmember Daniels, and I agree 100%. And I do think that there is work that needs to be done on the ordinance. I think the mobile food vendors probably need a separate category. I think that's all true, especially, you know, making changes to reduce the regulations on hours and locations. I have some concerns about some of the other things. Just trying to get some more information on it to begin with, but can you give me any kind of sense of fatality rates related to food truck fires or injury rates?
I'm going to have Dan come up here and give you more technical explanation.
Good afternoon. Locally, no. I'm not aware of any. I can send out an email and check and stuff, but I can tell you, valley-wide, we're very stringent on, and they're inspected regularly and stuff. Nationally, when you brought that to my attention just a few minutes ago, I Googled it and stuff, and I've got over 20 within the last six months of mobile food fires and stuff. So we know as a fire department that cooking is the number-one cause of fire, so we have an inherent danger, and we know that. So that's why we kind of put these rules together. Most of the valley cities require the hood systems, which she had referred to. We looked at that, and the code does allow, up to the discretion of the authority having jurisdictions, and we feel we can make that safe, provided they have the proper ventilation that's put in, which is part of their permitting process through Maricopa County, so we know that it's adequate and done right. And then if they maintain it and keep it clean, which will be part of our inspection process when we go out, and then in the worst-case scenario, we have the setback distance to protect the public and everybody else around and property and so forth. So we think, safety-wise, it's the most reasonable part, but we do need the minimum regulations that we do have in place.
So, I understand the cooking fires. I found lots of cooking fires. I agree with you. I didn't find any fatalities, though, and I Googled it, too, so I don't know. But, you know, we cook at home, and there can be cooking fires at home, and there can be cooking fires in a lot of situations. If it's in a building, you might get trapped in there and not get out, but in a vehicle that's not been damaged by an accident, I just can't imagine somebody getting trapped in there. I don't know. So it's hard to understand the risk there to anything but the property, which, that's the property owner's concern. I would think they have incentive to protect their own property, but I guess that's the bottom line, is I'd like to understand better what the need is on that. I do agree that separation required makes a lot of sense, especially if they don't have a fire suppression system. You know, they can take risks with their own property, but they shouldn't do that. You know, they don't have a right to take a risk with someone else's property. That all is, that's good sense, so, but if I can get a better sense of the scope of the, you know, there's a life safety component, okay. Help me understand that a little better. That's kind of where my questions are so far.
So you've had a chance to ask the questions, and they're in process of being researched?
I've had a number of other questions, and yes, staff's been helping with those along the way.
Thank you. I think that helps us, too, and Councilmember Daniels, thank you for bringing that up. So in preparation for Thursday night, anything else on Agenda Item 18? Councilmember Taylor?
Maybe a question for Mike. It was mentioned that the 300-foot buffer was kind of arcane in this application, and it was moved, but, you know, there's some mobile food vendors that will serve liquor and alcohol. I'm guessing just the current ordinances apply in those cases relative to whether they're in the entertainment district or not, or 300-foot buffers in the case that they are choosing to choose, or serve liquor. Is that right?
Mayor, Councilman Taylor, that is correct.
Okay, thank you.
This does not exempt them from other liquor regulations.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
I jump back to 16, remembering this morning there was, one of our team members asked if council members had questions or concerns with the Agenda Item 16. I didn't hear anyone comment on 16, so related to system development fees, are we squared away at this point? No additional questions?
Mayor, I've got some additional concerns, but overall, I think they're mostly resolved, so I'll just say that comment, but...
So it's still in process, and, okay. Agenda Item 19, the building inspection codes. We'll ask Kyle and Larry just to give us an update in preparation for Thursday night, and then for Thursday night, as the council will talk strategy.
Mayor Lewis, council, thank you. About a year ago, we started preparation to bring the 2012 building codes to the council for adoption. We began by going out to several interested parties, Chamber of Commerce, Small Business Alliance, other interested groups, and having discussions about what had changed in the codes, what was more restrictive, what was less restrictive, and kind of setting the stage of where we were going. Last summer, we came to the council in a study session, started the discussions at that point in time, and then in, at the November 7th council meeting, the council adopted the 2012 codes and associated amendments, with the exception of the green and the energy codes. The council also directed staff at that time to form a strike team to review a list of 32 items, which included the green and energy codes, and that list was provided by a group of interested citizens. The specific direction on the makeup of the strike team was given at that time as well. The team was to consist of two representatives, each from the Chamber of Commerce, the Small Business Alliance, the Home Builders Association, and the Citizens Group, and one town representative. The strike team was assembled and met four times, November 18th, 21st, December 2nd, and December 12th. After each item on the list of 32, a vote was taken, if needed. There were actually three different items that were on the list that were, votes were not needed. They were either a repeat, it was a manufacturer's thing that wasn't in the code, or the item simply wasn't in the code. So we were able to pare the list down to 29 items. The outcome of the vote, then, is what the recommendation to the council is this evening, or Thursday evening. It's the compilation of those votes was put together to make the recommendation. Eight of the items were unanimous to either retain or amend. Thirteen of the items received a 7-2 vote. One of the items received a 5-3 vote to amend. One was a 5-4 to retain. One item had two motions that both failed, and therefore, a motion to the, or a recommendation of the council on that item isn't coming forward because the item just stayed in the code, because there was no motion to change it or amend it or get rid of it. The strike team recommended 7-2 to adopt the energy code, and the strike team recommended 6-2 with one abstention to recommend adoption of the green code as a voluntary or optional code. So the reason I kind of went through those, went through those votes is I wanted you to see there wasn't, it wasn't a 7-2 vote every single time. There was actually good discussion and vetting on each one of those 32 items, and you had some that were 5-4, you had 6-3, you had abstentions. The voting was all over the place, so there was, there was never a consistent or, a consistent theme in the voting as we went through. The motions and the votes were really good. As I mentioned, the recommendation in the staff report is a culmination of the votes of the strike team, and it does include six amendments. It's important to note that the amendments that are coming out of the strike team were fully vetted, and they are actually less restrictive than the items that were in the code when we started. So through the process, we were to identify some alternatives and to bring those amendments forward. We have been asked about the general plan as it goes forward with the energy element. The general plan does have a chapter that supports the goal of keeping the town clean, safe, and vibrant. It's Chapter 11 in the general code. It outlines different approaches to energy and different alternative uses of energy and technology. The plan did receive, the general plan when it was approved, did receive a lot of input through different user groups as we went through the process, and it was overwhelmingly supported at the polls at that time. Through the process, we've also had discussions about ISO ratings, and what does that mean, and how does that impact what we're doing? Interestingly enough, the town was going through the rating process the last year as we were sort of going through the building code adoption process. Our rankings have come out since the building code, since the November 7th vote, and because the town has not adopted the energy code, we did lose points, and our rating has dropped somewhat in that area. Again, the motion before you...
Kyle, could you take just a moment? Our rating has dropped.
Correct.
What does that mean? What's the impact?
Mayor, I'll read you the, from the, from the letter that we received from ISO. It says, "The ISO is a leading supplier of statistical data, underwriting information, and actuarial analysis to the property casualty insurance industry in the United States. The classifications are distributed by ISO for use by..." The classifications are distributed by ISO for use by property and casualty insurers to assist in their insurance underwriting and premium development programs for residential and commercial properties. Insurers can use these classifications to offer insurance premium discounts to eligible properties in Gilbert." So the better ranking we have, the better premiums property owners can receive. As our rankings start to slide and our numbers drop, the insurance premiums would go up.
Do you have specifics on examples of what that could mean if a typical household has a premium this much and the rating goes down?
Don't have a...
Is it $5 or $500?
We can certainly research that for Thursday.
That would be great.
Sure, absolutely.
All right, you may continue.
So the, the motion, the action item on Thursday's agenda is what came out of the stakeholders group. So it would be essentially to approve the six amendments that the strike team came up with, adopt the energy code, and then adopt the green code as an optional code.
Okay. To the council, my guess is on the six amendments, because it's less regulation and that's what the strike team was trying to accomplish with those that, we'll probably be okay with those six amendments, that there could be, well, I would assume there would be some discussion on both the energy and the green. And I don't know if we'll have, similar to November 7th, a lot of citizens that want to speak. My, and I don't know if we have even any of those representatives here, if we can get the word out, but my, my feeling would be this, that's the scope, is the six amendments, the green, the energy, that's what feedback we would want at a public hearing, and if there's a lot of people to speak, we'd probably try and do it similar that we did on November 7th, maybe to give 10 minutes for individuals that feel this way, 10 minutes that might feel differently, then another five minutes for each. So potentially up to 30 minutes of discussion, if there's a lot of people, if there's not, obviously, we wouldn't do that. But I know for November 7th, there are a lot of questions of how much time would be allocated, and that would be my proposal, to go up to 30 minutes and try and have it succinct, well, summarized in a manner that there's still ample discussion, but in a set time period. Councilmembers, how do you feel about that? Is that worth? Okay, thank you. So Kyle, anything else that you feel the council should be aware of today?
No, Larry is here, mayor, if there's any questions of him as well.
Okay. Councilmembers, anything else for today? Councilmember Peterson?
Just wanted to ask a question about the ISO. Did you say that our ISO rating went down because we didn't adopt the energy code?
When, the ISO comes out with the different rankings, so one of the sections talks about the different codes that we've adopted, so they add up the points. Our points were higher for the codes that we have adopted, and when you get to the energy code section, the ranking and the point is substantially lower for that item because it is, it has not been adopted. Let me give you an example. We would receive a, maybe a 5 for adopting certain codes, and because we haven't adopted the latest energy code, we would have gotten a score of a 1 or a 2. So the number drops, and over the course of ranking all of those things, our ISO rating dropped by one, by one number.
What about the green code? If we adopt the green code as mandatory, would we get a...
The green code is not, is not part of their, that one is because it, unless I'm wrong, it's not part of their ranking system.
What does energy conservation have to do with risk of property loss and damage?
It's an excellent question. I mean, the, the energy code has a lot of different elements in it, and ISO believes that that is one of the codes that is needed to be best-in-class and to be able to provide those discounted premiums, so they're ranking those higher as they would a green code.
Is it possible to get a copy of that report?
Sure.
Could you send that?
Absolutely.
That'd be great.
Absolutely.
Thanks. And then, just to give a sense of, hopefully, I'm hoping to make it simple. I think we all want to make it simple. We've talked about this a lot, so there's probably not a whole lot of new points to be made. I think the thing I would love to understand, would help me, I think that we're probably, many on the council will want to adopt, I don't know, but, but I'm thinking most of us would agree the green code should remain voluntary. I think that's correct. The reason for me is that we shouldn't force people to conserve resources as long as they're the ones paying the bill. And for me, the same, for the same reason, I think the energy conservation code should be voluntary. I think they're the same on principle, basically. So, for those who, you know, agree on green should be voluntary, but energy should be mandatory, I'm sincere in seeking understanding in how they're different and why that is, and that'd be great. But that's really kind of the direction I'm hoping we'll go, is make them both voluntary.
Thank you. And I, I think that will be a good Thursday discussion, and appreciate you asking the question, so we can be prepared to think, to think about it and then give an answer on Thursday. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, mayor. Kyle, I ran out of time today, but I was hoping to call you and just ask for two things. One is just a copy of that, the ISO report, but also, I'd never seen meeting notes for the strike force, and I appreciate you sharing some of those summary metrics, but any notes you can share on that? I'd like to see, you know, how it, how the votes went by, you know, by item, if we have notes on that.
Absolutely. Mayor, Councilmember Taylor, we did not take minutes, so to speak, with the, with the group at, what we did. I do have the individual votes on each one of the, the individual items, but I do not have a summary list. We did not have a meeting note taker present. We didn't bring staff in to do that, but I do have the individual votes for the individual 32 items.
I think that'd be helpful. And then, is there any little quick description of the participants on the strike force that we can, you can just send those to me later.
Sure. Absolutely. Yeah, we've got a little bio on, on each one of them, where they work, who was selected, or how they were selected.
That'd be great.
Sure.
And I, you're probably planning on doing this, but that would be good to have all seven councilmembers receive that, Kyle.
Okay.
Okay. So to the council for Thursday night's meeting, I think other than when we finish the study session, I'll come back to three items related to Agenda Item 26, and I'll do that at the end. So anything else in preparation for Thursday? This is our Agenda Item number one. On our study session, we have, number three has been removed. Number five, we can see if there's any discussion on efficiency. Would it help, and I'll, I'll turn to our town manager, would it, because number four may be short of the number two, should we do Agenda Item number four, which is our Police Unified Building Facility Project Report?
Mayor, yes, I think that would be good.
Okay. All right. We will now have our report on the Police Unified Holding Facility Project.
I don't know if we're gonna go past 5:30, but if we do, I might need a doc. Mayor Lewis and council, I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you about this. I'm pretty excited to bring it to your attention, and done some good work on this, so we want to talk about a creative way to solve a problem that we have internally here with our police department. And I've made a little graphic here to try my best to illustrate the way that things kind of work, at least in this little scenario with us here, is if you'll notice here, our bad guy is Mr. Whiplash over there on the left. So, what happens is in the, in the typical process, if, if Mr. Whiplash there is going to be arrested for a crime, then we pick him up and then we take him into the police department to be either released or booked into jail. Now, if we were going to book somebody into jail, then what we have to do is complete all of the paperwork. We finger, we do what we call pre-booking. We fingerprint, we photograph, we put all their information into the computer, and then the way the process currently works is somebody has to put that guy into a police car, drive him all the way downtown to Phoenix, book him into there, through their process, turn around, come all the way back to Gilbert, and then that officer goes back into service doing his regular job. So that's the way that things work now. If we book them into jail because they need to see somebody at our court, then they sit there for a few hours. So hypothetically, Mr. Whiplash gets arrested, goes to the jail, you know, at roughly 10 o'clock, he's gonna see the judge a few hours later at 8 o'clock in the morning, then that means the next morning, somebody else has to get into a car, drive all the way downtown to Phoenix, pick up our bad guy, and then eventually turn around and drive him all the way back to the Gilbert Court, right next door. So, here is some information that kind of fills that out, is that in the previous fiscal year, just over 2,100 people were actually booked into jail. A lot more than that were arrested, but the number that was actually booked into jail was just over 2,100. Of that number, 85% were actually booked into jail on charges where they were going to be seen in the Gilbert Court. So for the purposes of this presentation, I'm just kind of dividing it into either you were booked for charges for the Gilbert Court or not. So for felonies or some other reason, some other jurisdiction, and of that number, 85% of them are going to turn right around and come right back to our own court. Now, the way that the system is currently designed, in a perfect world, the booking fees themselves, what the county charges us to put them, to, for them to sit there for a few hours, it would be cost-neutral. Basically, we put them in there, we're charged a certain amount of money, and then that cost is passed on through the court to the bad guy, and then that bad guy is supposed to turn around, write a check eventually, and come out clean, and then none of the booking fees would ever affect the town of Gilbert. The other thing that we've done to try to help this process is we've come up with some creative detention officer scheduling procedures. We have civilian detention officers to help take the load, the brunt of all this traveling and transporting of officers that do not require police, actual police officers. So here are some of our issues here, is that there's no local option. Now, roughly five years ago, we had southeast, right here by the, you know, the motor vehicle division. They still have a court and everything over there, but as far as an actual facility where we can book somebody into jail, that's not available to us anymore. The, the building itself is in disrepair. Even if the county wanted to start using it again, really, they can't use it anymore. It's just not in a condition to do that. So had that been an option, this really wouldn't necess, wouldn't be as necessary. We could still just drive people right there and county would take care of it. That's not there. The current scheduling that we have is creative and it saved us a lot of money, but we can't keep it up due to exhaustion and burnout. We can't work our current detention staff on a long-term basis with our current scheduling. Also, even with our current scheduling, if every detention officer we had never took a day off, as far as never took a sick day, never took any vacation whatsoever, we would still not have 24/7 coverage. There are still going to be gaps, which means you now have sworn police officers doing the job of detention officers and not doing their job on the street. Additionally, it ends up causing some unpredictability as far as our interruptions in service. So in other words, if a detention officer ends up calling in sick, it actually affects our patrol, and it affects our staffing on the street, because now that means we've got to take somebody off of the street to do their job, and that means if our patrol is already at minimum staffing, we've got to call somebody else in to maintain our minimum staffing on the street. And you can see how this kind of has a domino effect as a result of that, which of course then also means that it affects our overtime. We can't, there's no margin there. There's nothing, there's no buffer, and as a result of having no buffer, we have a more difficult time of managing our overtime. There are other just general rising external costs. In the previous, well, I'll explain it in just a moment, but we, we can't control how much the county is charging us to, for their services. Of course, the rising cost of the vehicles themselves for gas, for maintenance. And so you'll see right there, the next bullet is that in the previous fiscal year, our two, we have two detention transport vans, and we put 86,000 miles on those two vans in the previous year. And so those 86, part of what contributes to the problem here is not just the fact that we're burning gas to move that vehicle 86,000 miles, but that means you have our officers, our detention officers, and we have prisoners spending that much more time in a vehicle, traveling back and forth when perhaps they don't need to, putting them at greater risk of collisions. The last bullet you see there is this, is the booking process, just dealing with county, is a very time-consuming process. So I've got the number 90 minutes up there, and I can tell you from personal experience, that is the absolute bare minimum seamless process. We, I go out today, I arrest Mr. Whiplash, I do all my pre-booking stuff, and then I get into a car, leave Gilbert, drive to Phoenix, do what I need to do there, turn around, drive back. That is a 90-minute operation for a single person to go down there. Additionally, we do have to depend quite a bit on Maricopa County. It's their jail, so we're using their, their facility. They have, you know, for their own reasons, upped the cost to put somebody in there over the last three years incrementally by a total of 41%. They've, they've increased the fees. Now, again, if all the bad guys pay the fees, that's, that doesn't affect us if that were the case. Also, there are unpredictable, unpredictable procedural changes, and those are significant. What has happened is because of lawsuits that they've had and other reasons that they have internally, they've decided that for the medical problems, when we bring in a prisoner there, they've got to be seen medically evaluated. They've outsourced that to a private vendor, and what that's done is, is increased the amount of time now that our detention officers have to sit there while that's being done. So the average is about an hour per prisoner. So that means, straight math, is if a detention officer comes in and he's transporting 10 people to the jail, he will be there 10 hours, and he'll either be on overtime, or he will then have to have an incoming detention officer meet him at the jail, take over sitting there, and then he'll turn around and drive back. So he spent his entire shift sitting in Phoenix, the Maricopa County Jail with our 10, that many of are going to turn around in a few hours and come right back. So that's kind of what's going on there. Other procedural changes, we used to be able to take our immigration holds if we got somebody that was going to go to ICE that needed to be deported. We could take them to them and they would sit there. They've decided that they're not going to take them anymore. One of the most significant changes that's affected us more recently is that what they used to do, because for the number of prisoners that we were bringing back to see our court, they would basically release them to be able to go to the court, and then we would take them back to the jail, and there was no additional charge. Well, they've changed that now, so now what they do is they pack up all their stuff, they send them out the door for that trip back to our court, and then if we have to bring anybody back again, they charge a second time, because there's a rebooking fee. Thank you very much. We know you're coming right back, but we're going to book you a second time because you came back through the gates again. So, that, that's kind of the, the process that's going on. And so, the other, a couple other billing issues is that we have had enough discrepancy between what they actually charge and what we have discovered we should be paying, that I have an administrative assistant that basically her number-one task among her other jobs is to scour the bill and literally go through it line by line, and since February of last year, we've recovered $74,000 of being overbilled for what they've sent. So basically, the way the process works, we get it, she spends the time going through it, she identifies all the overcharges, sends it to them and asks them if they agree, and that's the amount that they've agreed to, and then they credit us back that amount of money. The other thing is that this isn't an ideal situation, and go figure, prisoners don't pay completely the amount that they're owed, even though that cost is passed on to them. And even if they do pay, many of them are put on a payment plan, which means it's costing us. We, we, the town, pick up the shortfall, and the best that we can estimate at this time, because there are so many variables that relate to when they start paying, how much they pay, do they stop paying partway through, that it's roughly a $45,000 to $70,000 a year shortfall that the town of Gilbert just eats, if that makes sense. Okay, so, here is the proposed solution. If you'll go with my graphic again here, is if we had a way to have a staffing for a 24/7 holding facility right here inside of the Gilbert Police Department, then what would happen is I get to go out and I get to arrest Snively there, and then I charge him with a, with a crime that's going to be seen in our own court. He never makes the trip to Phoenix. We have officers, detention officers that actually stay in the police station in our holding facility, and then a few hours later, he actually goes and gets seen on his own charges right there, right next door, literally right next door, not driving anywhere. So that's the principle that we're working with here. Now, to make that happen, oh, during the course of looking into this whole thing, what we've also found is our facility is 10 years old, and there are a number of things that actually need to be improved. In fact, in talking to some consultants, meaning some attorneys that deal with jail issues, they came in and they evaluated our, our holding facility, and we need to upgrade our camera system. We're on a, an analog system that needs to be updated. They said we need a shower and wash-down area in case they have some kind of contamination. We need a padded cell. We currently have some coverings on the windows that need to be removed, and just some general workflow improvements to just make our facility better. So regardless of the results of this particular project, at some point soon, we would have to start taking steps towards making these improvements at, at some level. Now, the, the estimated cost for all of those improvements at this point is $300,000. And you'll see these numbers again. Okay. So to make this happen, just if we wanted to go out today and say, absolutely, makes perfect sense, we got to make this happen... makes perfect sense, we've got to make this happen, to accommodate all the margin for people taking days off and to have a 24-hours-a-day, seven-day-a-week operation, we would need 19 detention officers, 19 civilian detention officers to make it work. What Gilbert currently has is six. When I say six, there are no full-time supervisors. I have Sergeant Mondragon that they report to, but he is a sworn supervisor that has a number of other obligations. There are no full-time detention officer supervisors. So even I can do this map, math here, we've got a 13-person gap in what we would need there. Now, if you're thinking, what I was thinking when we went through this exercise, we realized a $300,000 improvement to the facility and adding 13 bodies is, there's got to be a better way to do this. And there is. Turns out that there is another agency that does the exact same thing that we do, and that's right next door, that's Chandler. They are the only other agency in the valley that's in the exact same situation. They make the same trips, all the same detention officers in Gilbert, see all the same guys in Chandler, in Phoenix, high-five. Frank, how you doing? Hey Ralph, how you doing? Everybody picks up their own people, drives back to their own court, and pays all the same fees. They have all the exact same struggles that we have. So this is, the more that we talk to each other, the more that we realized that Gilbert actually has a facility that they don't have. They do not have the infrastructure to accommodate more prisoners. It's just not there. Ours is underutilized. We actually have more facility than we make use of. In fact, the consultant that came in, the attorney, said that we could accommodate just over 100 people at one time in our facility. Now, we have no intent, we've never had, I mean, even with Chandler, we wouldn't even get close to that, and based on our calculations, we wouldn't even go that high. We would be closer to about an 84, 85 cap. But in any case, what we have is the facility, and Chandler has more personnel. They have currently nine detention officers and one supervisor. So in other words, they have 10. They have 10 to offer, and we have six. So here's the idea for the better way, is that we go in to make these improvements, and we split it right down the middle. They pay for half of the operational and construction costs to get this thing off the ground, just like we pay for half. We end up leveraging and getting their 10 bodies, and we commit our six. Now, if you're doing the math here, even their 10 and our six together is a 16. It is not the 19. So the other three comes from Chandler has agreed that they would hire one more, and we have already submitted for two detention supervisors in our upcoming fiscal year, in the upcoming budget. We need that anyway, but if we only had that, it really wouldn't solve our problem. But the other reason that we wanted to make sure that we came up with two instead of one, and not Chandler with two, is because we felt like it's our facility. We wanted to have a little more investment into the supervision of the operation of this, of this thing. But that's the basic premise of that. So what we end up getting out of this is, of course, we leverage our partnership with them, and we keep police officers actually doing police work. So what would basically happen then in this scenario is I go out and I arrest Mr. Whiplash, I decide he's got to stay, he can't be released, he's got to be booked into jail to be seen in court. I bring him in, I literally would hand him off to a detention officer. I wouldn't even have to stay to do the photograph, the fingerprinting, the pre-booking, any of those things would not take place as a sworn police officer. I hand that off, I turn around, I get back in my car, and the citizens of Gilbert gets my services, right, boom, right again. The detention officers that remain in our facility take care of everything else, they hold who they can hold. The few that still have to travel, we're not eliminating all travel to Phoenix, still make the trip to Phoenix, and we streamline the process considerably. Not only that, we gain the improvements that we need to have anyway, at half the cost, with Chandler paying half. And then, as I have there, the increased independence. In other words, you know, we get to cut Maricopa County out of this equation by considerable amount. The other piece of this is that we, by reducing, I kind of mentioned it earlier, we are estimating conservatively, we would cut half of our miles out, conservatively. And here's the reason: not only are we driving fewer people to Phoenix, we're sharing the number of vehicles now. Now, half the fleet being driven to Phoenix is Chandler's vehicles. So if we just conservatively say we're cutting half the miles, so we're down to 43,000 miles, our fleet, and again, I'm taking the conservative end, is saying $2.80 a gallon, that right there is over $120,000, just in gasoline savings, right there. You get the workflow improvements, in other words, what I just explained, walk in, drop them off, get right back on the street. We have the ongoing cost savings as far as that gap that the town of Gilbert is currently covering, the estimated $45,000 to $70,000 that is occurring right now. That gets reduced because we're not asking that of the prisoner to begin with, so we're not covering the gap. That's not there. And then all of these things that we get out of it, Chandler gets as well. So, and I can tell you, by the way, Chandler is ecstatic. They are ready to write the check. Chief Dorn has already talked to Chief Duggan, the new police chief in Chandler, and he's all for it as well. Okay, so I see everybody staring intently at the numbers up here. So this is what we're proposing, is that the original $3,000, or excuse me, $300,000 comes out of contingency funds, and only half of that ends up being paid by Gilbert. Chandler would be paying the other half. The personnel cost, as is noted there, it's fully loaded. That's the original cost, just to get it going with these two new detention supervisors, as I mentioned also. We've already got them in the budget request. And then the $20,000 is over the course of the year. That's what we're estimating for food and janitorial and that kind of thing that's going to take place. Insurance is basically a wash. What we found is the insurance company said that because of the reduced number of miles that we're bringing people back and forth across Phoenix and Gilbert, that reduces our liability, and we won't be paying anything more in any kind of insurance. So as you can see there, bottom line, total estimated project startup cost for this whole thing, for the town of Gilbert, is $340,000. And it's important for me to mention, this is my last slide there, we've got the partnership, we've got the improvements in the facility that need to take place regardless. They're sharing the cost of that. And so just based, those numbers you see there, the return on investment for the construction is based solely on the gap, applying the gap that we're covering for the booking fees. I'm not, that's not including any savings for gas, any savings in any other way, in any other manpower. You're looking at two to three years to get all of that right back. The only other thing that I want to make sure that I mention is that if we don't do this, it's, we don't get to stay status quo because the staffing, the creative staffing that we're doing now is not tenable. So that means we're probably going to regress to more officers having to do more, and it's going to actually have a detrimental effect to the number of officers around the street, or at least the cost to the town as a result of that. And we're still going to have to find a way to make the improvements on the facility. If the council is, you know, on board, basically what the plan is, is we would go forward with paying for a design review and actually get firm numbers. We would hire a construction manager at risk, and they would come out, they would get all the numbers, and then we would come back within the next couple of months, council meeting, to get a vote on proceeding forward, but we would have the actual numbers nailed down. Yes, thank you. And we would also have an IGA worked out. We've already been in touch with their attorneys. They actually just did a tour through our facility a couple of days ago, and their attorney was amazed at the facility that we have as well. And everybody on both sides, as far as the police departments are concerned, are nothing but smiles and hopeful that this thing will take place. So, questions?
What a great presentation. Now, go back a slide. That's the estimated cost. And we did talk in terms of some of the benefits of, and the savings, the bookings of $45,000 to $70,000. I was expecting one more slide to complete the cost-benefit analysis. Now, we've, you said some of the verbal comments of some of the savings, but is there one more slide somewhere where you've, and yes, you have to make assumptions, because some of it is not specific, but based on the assumptions, and now you can go forward one slide, because the estimated savings and recovery time, that's just on the booking part, on the billing.
Correct.
But you have somewhere where you've done estimates on how the gasoline we're going to save, and the overtime, and some of the tangible, and there's a lot of intangible benefits that we see, but some of the tangible benefits that actually can be put to money, to a dollar figure?
We spent an inordinate amount of time trying to calculate these things. The budget office helped us immensely, and there are so many variables that we couldn't contain that. All I can tell you is that this, the numbers, any numbers you see here at all are the most conservative numbers that we could produce. I mean, it was, it was frustrating actually for us to not put more of the numbers that we know will probably take place there, but I didn't feel comfortable putting numbers in there that I can absolutely guarantee you are missing. Unless, Mary, is there anything that would be helpful here that you think?
Mayor, council members. Mary Vindant with the Office of Management and Budget. I've worked with Commander Smith on part of this presentation and going through some of the numbers. Commander Smith did mention earlier in the presentation the amounts that they believe that they would save in driving miles, that 86,000 that they anticipate, is that correct? About 50% that they anticipate that they would save?
Easily, yes.
These cost savings estimates are based on only those direct costs, as you mentioned, Mayor, and so they do not include the intangibles. We'd be happy to go back and revisit some of that when it comes back to council as a formal presentation with the actual, the full contingency request for the cost of the facility. But this reflects just what that activity would cost us in terms of fees, were it to be happening down at Maricopa County.
And I'll, it looks great, and I love the partnership with Chandler. And that's good creative thinking and teamwork, and I think for taxpayers, the right way to go. It just seems we're so close, and especially with our budget department, where you're used to making assumptions, can't be exact, but still making assumptions and coming up with actual figures, that it would be nice to have that one more step for my vantage. I'll see if other council members have different thoughts and...
Eddie Cook has a question.
Councilmember Taylor? Vice Mayor Cook has a question, please.
Well, thank you, Mayor. I'm in very much a big support of this particular process, but what I'd like to ask Commander Smith, only because of a number of ride-alongs I've been on, as well as most recently with the chief, and thinking about possibly maybe expanding this, because one of the things that I saw in my most recent ride-along was the number of minors that were a part of police activity in pulling over individuals, and where the individual may have been an adult, is taken away, but the minor is left there for either a parent or a neighbor to come by and pick up the minor. And sometimes, in many cases, you know, identifying an adult to come pick up a minor was quite difficult, which left the police officer really out of commission for a long period of time. So I wonder if Commander Smith could maybe elaborate how we might be able to expand maybe facilities to take minors to a more central location like this, and waiting for maybe, you know, adults to come and pick them up?
Vice Mayor, unfortunately, legally, we cannot, because this facility, the way that it's designed now, our holding facility, and since you've done ride-alongs, you've probably seen it, it's divided in two. One side's supposed to be juvenile, and the other side, adult, because we by law have to keep them separate. And with these redesigned, basically, it would become, the one we have up here at our main station would become solely adult, and we can't, we couldn't utilize the detention officers we have that are sitting on our prisoners here to also sit on juveniles, unless for some reason they just were available and we use them in that fashion. But the juvenile couldn't physically be located at the same place, and so we would be using our sand tan station for our juvenile operations. So for that specific case, I would not anticipate that this would help that.
Is there any plan in the future to maybe accommodate a different type of facility where, you know, we might be able to, you know, take minors to a safe location, not hampering, you know, the officer from being out of commission, where, again, if we could think of something that could provide, you know, more efficiency or better operations for minors?
Absolutely. We can see what other options are available and think about that. We haven't thought about that specifically. I do know that we have, you know, our counselors and some volunteers are on call 24/7 as well. So I know that one option, if officers choose to do it, is to contact one of them and ask them if they'd be willing to come in and literally babysit a juvenile until we can get ahold of a responsible adult. But it's a challenge.
Vice Mayor Cook, any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you. Good thoughts, and that can be a follow-up item from this discussion. Councilmember Taylor?
Thank you, Mayor. When you laid out the workflow, was there any parts of that that you considered privatizing? You know, just some, a contractor would do that service rather than doing it in-house?
There is an entirely different project that we're in the middle of looking at that may or may not involve some kind of the privatization of transporting prisoners in the future, you know, like an East Valley thing that will involve more cities. We're looking into that kind of an operation right now. I can tell you, actually, we're pretty, we're knee-deep in that with our agencies nearby. But for the purposes of our limited needs right here, just between Chandler and Gilbert, I don't think that it would be, I don't believe it would be a viable option. I don't think there's anybody that's in the business of just transporting back and forth. And obviously, it doesn't eliminate putting the time, the time and everything. Am I chief, am I, anything else?
Any other questions? Councilmember Peterson?
Not that you need the additional support for it, but I agree, I think that we could do more to develop the overall, even the ongoing savings. This addresses the one-time investment, how it'll be, you know, the return on investment through the booking fees. But if we have 86,000 miles that we know we're going to save, you can assume a gas price, assume, you know, $3.5 a gallon, that's $300,000 a year in fuel. And as long as you make clear your assumptions, we can still use those to gauge, you know, whereabouts we are. And so I do think that more work could be done on that, and I think there's a lot of potential in this idea that overall, it's going to be clear that we're going to save money for the taxpayers and be more efficient all at the same time. So I'd just like to see more of that, and I can talk with staff on it, but thanks.
And my comment is not complicated to our budget team. I think, again, you're going to love me saying this in a day, I mean, if you just, exactly what Councilmember Peterson said, put the assumptions down, the numbers should show justification, from what I'm seeing, easily.
Mayor and council, absolutely. We'd be happy to address that. We wanted to provide you some of the numbers of the direct impact for this facility in this initial proposal. When this comes back to council, once they've selected, if council is comfortable with moving forward with this proposal, what would happen is they would come back for the complete contingency. I mean, you'd see much more detail around some of those intangible benefits and some of the costs that we would have once we select a construction manager at risk, and quite a bit more detail around each of those.
And the only hesitation I have, because it looks good, and I would say green light from my perspective, to go from this step to the next, is that hundreds and hundreds of hours of work, or is it just a little bit of work to summarize something that therefore makes sense to do?
Mayor and council members, it is not hundreds and hundreds of hours of work, so we'd be happy to put some more detail to some of those numbers.
Now, I haven't heard from all council members, but I would assume this makes sense. Go forward, there's a thumbs up.
I just wanted to thank you for the cartoons. Somebody finally got through to me. It's been years, and I finally got a council presentation the first time. So, you know, thank you very much, and the other departments can take note.
And I also want to emphasize, I'm not wanting to slow this down with the comments. I mean, I think it can be very quick, and just putting numbers takes that one last step to show the official cost-benefit analysis, the assumptions that are documented, that could probably be shared with the council independent of a study session, and then it could come to a formal... could come to a formal council meeting.
And just one last thing, Mayor and council members, that one of the reasons that we wanted to bring it to you today is, one of the items that they would be moving forward with in pretty short order here is to direct select the architect. That contingency would be in the amount of 32,500. That could be handled through the town manager's office, but the PD department wanted to bring forward the entire proposal so you get an idea of what would be entailed with that before we move forward with even that.
That's my point. I'd like that one step before we spend 32,500. That's me. And easy. Keep it easy. Spend a day, put your assumptions with the cost and then I think it'll, even the, you know, you did $3 a gallon, but if we did the 55 cents a gallon, which is the normal return, it's, just put it in writing and I think we've got it. Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, I think there's lots of strong points to it and no problem going forward. I do think we could bolster it a little bit by, by looking, at least on the transportation part, to see how we can get out of that business. I mean, that's not a core competency of the police department. I don't know that the taxpayers hire him to haul people around. Certainly, you know, the important work is done and to keep us focused on that. And if there's a reasonable model where that could be cost neutral as it's intended and that could be outsourced, I think that'd be a pretty valuable thing to at least look and do a good hard, maybe that's not possible, but I think that would be helpful for me in supporting that.
Thank you. Great presentation, as Councilmember Cooper said, and good thinking, good partnership with Chandler. And so I, do you have the direction that you need?
Mayor, if I may, Don Irvine with the Office of Management and Budget. We wanted to look for one last item of clarification. Time really is of the essence with this particular project and we want to make sure that, that we're not continuing to incur undue costs associated with that. If we were to bring back that information Thursday evening before council, would that suffice?
Yes. Now, it's not an agenda item, but it, is there anything that fits in on Thursday night's agenda that current events or?
Does it need to be agendized, Mike, or is it, I mean, you're looking for just a head nod, Mayor, correct? I mean, is what you're...
And I don't even know if you need to bring it in the Thursday meeting. It could be an email.
Well, but you're still, I defer to the attorney on...
Although it'd be nice for the public to be able to see it. I understand.
Mayor, members of the council, I think we can amend the agenda to include it.
Okay. All right. Thank you. We now move to the last agenda item. It's the benchmark report, which is another exciting part of today's study session. And Don and team and Mary will ask you to give us the summary. Councilmembers, the link came yesterday. I don't know how much time you've had a chance to look at it. I had a head start by a day and so I was able to spend a little more time and I was very excited with the results. So please, we'll accept the summary at this point.
Thank you, Mayor and council. Good afternoon again. We're pleased to be here today to share with you our first benchmark report, which aids the town in accomplishing our vision of being best in class in all lines of service. As you may recall, in August, one of the items that we discussed at the council retreat was organizational performance management. And one of those three components that we really focus on, those three being performance measures are key organizational metrics, which will be included on our online dashboard. The third one being the most recent effort and that is the town's benchmarking effort. Up on this screen, you will see all of the departments and divisions that are included in the report. And I'd like to note that this was really an effort that all of our departments were engaged with across the entire organization. And what that resulted in is a total of 83 benchmarks across 25 functional, or 25 functional areas in 17 departments, utilizing a total of 33 communities in 15 states. What you'll see up on the screen is a map that's also included in the report on page 11. And what those numbers in the states indicate is the number of benchmark communities that were utilized in each state. What I'd like to highlight there is the reason that we did not select a set number of benchmark communities to be used across the board was we wanted individual departments to identify communities that made sense to benchmark against for their respective functional area. So for example, economic development may have a benchmark that makes sense for them to look to, but it may not necessarily make sense for IT to use that same community to benchmark against because operations can vary so significantly between departments. Another chart that you'll see in the report that will help you navigate it is a chart that includes all of the departments and then all of the benchmark communities. A theme that you'll see throughout the report is those that are highlighted are also national citizen survey benchmarks and we wanted to use those again to be consistent with our choice of benchmark communities that were based primarily on population size, service delivery and function. So an example of one of the pages that you will see in the report, I've got the Office of Information Technology up on the screen. You'll see in the top left, there's an icon that will tie to a strategic initiative that that department's effort or department's efforts are specifically aligned with. So for IT, that could be technology leader. And that will, that icon will take you directly to that portion of gilbertdaisy.gov/strategic and tell you where we're at with our wildly important goals, goals with respect to technology leader. At the bottom of the page, you'll also see a link to that department's internal performance measures that are recorded in the budget document, where we look at two prior year actuals, projected year end for the current year and where they think that they're going to be next year. The tables on the screen indicate the three benchmarks that were selected by this particular department. You'll see Gilbert listed at the top and it's always highlighted, so it's easy to see. And then the individual benchmark communities, two within this, two to three within this state and two to three outside the state. Additionally, at the bottom of each benchmark, you'll see footnotes and data sources. So if there's anything to be taken into consideration when reviewing these benchmarks, it will be recorded right there. So we wanted to provide you some highlights of examples you'll see in the report and provide a minimum and maximum range in where Gilbert Falls in a few of those categories. The first one being from the police department and total Part I crimes per thousand residents. You all know that Gilbert was recently named the second safest city in the U.S. according to Law Street Media and you'll see part of that reflected in this metric because as you see Gilbert is at the very minimum of that range at 16.7 per thousand residents as opposed to the maximum at 35.5. One of the next examples we wanted to highlight was, we took a look in the water department for how competitive our rates were to other local jurisdictions and then other local communities outside the state. The minimum being 22.91, Gilbert Falls at 23.27 and the maximum at just above $38. And that assumes about 8,000 gallons of consumption with a three-quarter inch meter. So we tried to specify and make sure that we were consistent across the board in how we were looking at those water rates. Another common example that you'll see reported in different municipal budget documents, and it's one that we use often around here, is full-time equivalents per thousand residents. And you'll see up on the screen, the current FTE per thousand resident rate for Gilbert is 5.44. That is based on, all of these were done based on authorized positions for FY14, authorized and budgeted positions, and then the current population estimate from MAG of 227,598 people. Another figure that we wanted to look at that is of importance to the town is keeping our ongoing general fund expenditures per capita as low as possible. We want to provide the highest level of service at the lowest possible cost. And again, you'll see that Gilbert is at the low end of that range at 463.63. Lastly, one of the examples we wanted to highlight was the fire department's average response time. That's the time that the apparatus is en route to a scene. And the reason we wanted to look at that was not only because it's a measure that's commonly reported among fire departments, but it's also speaks to a number of different aspects of the fire department's operations. And that speaks to all of those working on all cylinders. So for instance, that could be influenced by the number of crews available, the location of the incident, the location of the available, the closest available response unit, road conditions and traffic. So keeping that number as low as it is and having us as low as we are in that range speaks to the fire department's success in their operations. So with some of those examples, our plans are to continually revisit this document and these measures and continue to align our benchmarks with our other components of our performance management strategy, which includes working with our Valley Benchmarking Cities group. And with that, I would open it up to questions.
Councilmember Peterson?
First of all, I just want to thank staff for their work on this. This is very exciting. It's something that Patrick talked about. One of the first things he started talking about when he, when he came aboard with us. Appreciate him pushing forward on this. I know it's been a lot of work and there's work left to be done. So I just want to start with that. And reading the report has been very informative. There's a lot of great information in there. I want to throw out there my biggest concern. Maybe you can solve it for me today or maybe we can talk more offline here. But when you say, to me, it's all about what we benchmark against. And you said there are some cases where operations are so different or the character, you know, the size of the city or whatever, something is different enough that we don't include it. What is that measure? So in other words, how can we be sure that we didn't just choose comparisons that make us look good or bad? Because sometimes we may politically correct thing is, hey, we need more economic development. Well, I think that too. So let's, we might find benchmarks that show us on the low end of that. So that'll put tank, you know, gas in the tank to work on that issue. Or just the opposite. You know what? We're already as fit and trim as we need to be. So we're best in class in FTEs per thousand. What do you know? So I'm not saying it's not true. Maybe it is. But what I think is that we all suffer from confirmation bias. We tend to see what we want to see. Studies after study confirms I have that same weakness we all do. So I think we need to specify what our objective standards are and may be different for each department, but there should be some objective standards that you use as criteria to decide whether or not you include something in a benchmark. And it would probably be a good idea to decide those standards before you actually start looking at their metrics so that you can't be influenced by what the numbers will actually end up being. So I don't, maybe you've already solved all this, but when I looked through it, that was a question I couldn't answer with any certainty is how do I know? If you're just looking at numbers and just a gut check, you know, I think they're just a little too different from us, that's not going to cut it. We're going to end up going the wrong way. That's not going to be objective. It's not going to be what we want to really move us forward and be the best we can be. So that, there, it's all out. That's my concern. Maybe you can help me.
Sure. Mayor, Councilmember Peterson, primarily the department selected benchmarks that made sense in terms of their service delivery before they looked at any numbers whatsoever. They did select based on population and kind of, they looked at, to make sure that their, the local government that they were going to benchmark against made sense for their area. You'll see in that matrix that I referenced on an earlier slide that the ones that are most consistently used locally are Chandler and Scottsdale. And for a lot of reasons, that makes sense to benchmark against Chandler because they have a lot of similar functions and operations. They're also very similar in terms of population size, as is Scottsdale. So for, I'll give you an example for the Office of Management and Budget. What we used as the first criteria is making sure that we chose communities that were of similar size. And then we looked at those communities that had a AAA bond rating that were of similar size, that had similar functions. So then we could look at what some of those key org metrics, or some of those metrics look like and benchmark against them so that we could see in those cities that have a AAA bond rating, what are some things, how do their operations compare to ours in a series of these metrics? But to your point, as we move through this process and it becomes more of the language of this organization and as we revisit these benchmarks and performance measures, we're always going to be looking for ways to incorporate more. And we'd be happy to take feedback on any, on any performance measures that you may like to see in the future.
That's great. You guys are awesome. I appreciate being able to talk to you and I will talk more offline. But just as an example, you say similar size. You need an operational definition of that. What is considered similar size? You know, up to 150%, down to 75% of our size? What is it? You have to define that. Same with functions. Which functions? You know, if they've got nine out of 10 of the same functions, then we include them. If it's, I don't know. I mean, there's got to be some objective standards. Maybe you've already gone to that level of detail. I'm looking forward to learning more. That's cool though that you selected cities before knowing the metrics. That gives me some peace of mind. Thank you.
Councilmember Cooper?
I haven't worked all the way through it yet, but I will. I did wanted to know, kind of, did have some improvement opportunities come out of it. Have we found areas where we, hopefully we're not the best at it. I mean, we want to be the best at everything, but I doubt we are yet because we still have room to grow. So what improvement opportunities are starting to show themselves and, and what's the process from here to start integrating that into our, our work processes?
Mayor, Councilmember Cooper, I would start by going back to Councilmember Peterson's comment and that there are always going to be two ways to look at any one measure. So for instance, those that were up on the slide, the general fund expenditures per capita. For some communities, that may not be the right level of spending. For us, we believe that that low level of, the, keeping that number low at the lowest possible rate we can speaks to what's right for the town of Gilbert. So we are looking through the different benchmarks to see where are those areas where we can optimize our operations. Additionally, as I mentioned, we looked at, in the Office of Management and Budget, those cities that have a AAA geo bond rating and the town of Gilbert has a AA1 bond rating. So we are looking at those kinds of things to see how we can move towards that goal. In addition, for example, just off the top of thinking through this, I'd be happy to provide you some more detail. But if you look at police department and the citizens per sworn officer, you'll see that we do have a higher number there than some other communities. And so that's one of the things that we would be looking at moving forward. Do we have the right setup for our community and our needs?
Yeah. And Mayor, members of the council, if I could add just a few comments. Your comments, Councilwoman Peterson and Councilman Cooper are well taken. This is just another document to help us work towards refining our operations and helping us sharpen the pencil as we try to find ways to enhance the quality of our services and reduce the cost to our residents in many areas. I think we have a lot to be very proud of, especially against our peers locally within the region, which are the communities that probably are the most relevant for us to benchmark ourselves against as they operate under the same statutes, under the same conditions generally that we do. Nationally, each department spent a tremendous amount of time trying to find communities that would add value by benchmarking ourselves against them. But this will be an ongoing process for this as we use this document to help guide our decisions we make for service delivery, for selection of capital equipment and infrastructure. And we may have some cities drop off of this list and we may find some new cities to add to this list. We may end up in some areas in which we feel like we really are functioning at a very high level, benchmarking against ourselves that year in and year out, you know, how do we take what we're doing and, and make improvements upon that. So this document is not the endpoint for us. It's just the beginning as we utilize this going forward to question what we're doing, how we're doing it and look locally and nationally to find people who are doing it differently and maybe better than us and emulating what they do.
Other questions before I jump in and make a comment? Okay, I will. I, as I said, I had a head start and I did look at every page. And I am just, I'm not sure how to express the feelings of appreciation because this does go back to the mission and the vision and the best in class. And I think, I appreciate Councilmember Peterson's comments. One of the things though, we took some, we took some extra steps and there's more to come. And some of the background is, from that vision statement, it was for our internal teams to say, okay, what are services that we want to see how we're doing compared to others? So it was a strategic decision that was made to say, this is something we want to benchmark. And so well thought out. And I know it's, it's a challenge and sometimes I'll use Scottsdale as an example. They have more employees because of the hotels and different other services that they have said, we need more staff for this. And so there's, there's some situations where it's a little bit hard to compare. But this is up to date of about a third of these measurements I had seen from past years. Two-thirds are new and I hadn't seen before. And there are some areas of improvement. The very first question, I mean, I probably should have been complimenting and I did jump to that bond rating. That was my first question. Well, how do we get to that next level? And that was good dialogue for me to hear some of the things we're doing. But it's up-to-date information about our taxes and again, it shows from a Gilbert perspective and representing our citizens, some great things are happening. And it's our sales tax, our property tax... And it's our sales tax, our property tax, the number of employees and then the services that are being provided that we are doing a great job. We don't want to be complacent and there are some communities though, that would now be looking to us as, as a best-in-class measurement and that's very positive. Not that I want to single out anyone, but from a business perspective, of course, page 32 did catch my attention, development services. I hadn't seen how we compared in our permits, both with residential and then commercial, I hadn't seen. And that, I look at that and say, that is a wonderful tool from our economic development team members to be able to, to say, look at this statistic. So I, I'm very pleased. I do see some spots of improvement that our town leadership can take and run with. And so it's another step. It's maybe even 10 steps compared to information the council had a year ago. So thank you. In representing Gilbert's citizens, I think as they take a detailed look at this, they will say, wow, we've got some great things happening in Gilbert. Yes, we do have some areas of improvement, but it should be a, a report to our Gilbert digital team. I know Parker just stepped out, but I, he's got, this is a goldmine, 20 new news reports he could do just on this one report. We just gave him a gift. And, and so I'll look forward to reading a lot of this in the newspaper. But that, that's, those are some of my comments. So maybe unless there's anything else, we should leave it at that. Thank you. The, in ending today's study session, I could probably do this on Thursday night, but I think it's so fast that I'll just mention the, there is a, an email that Vicki is sending. We're still trying to come up with a date for our joint Small Business Alliance meeting. So far, the dates that have been proposed are not working out, so please give her feedback as quickly as possible. And then I don't normally give a lot of updates on our Gateway Board meetings, but I, I did want to just let you know for all of the last few years of all the positive news, this may have come across as negative, but it's, it's just, we'll hear the details. The revenues for our Gateway Airport are down. And that has everything to do with Frontier and Spirit shifting their operations back to Sky Harbor. Allegiant continues to have very high numbers, 88% load factor. And, and so revenues are down, but expenses are down too. There is some, at the last board meeting, some short-term decisions were made for the budget projections are slightly off, but long-term will continue to do very well. And from an investment standpoint, see, the airport is continuing to thrive. The ninth and 10th gate will be open in just a few months and that will be on our west side, our last gate that we will build. And new website, I think they took after our Gilbert digital team and have updated a www.justplaineasy.com and a lot of nice things there. But that's a quick summary in case you were getting any news reports. Still very positive, the economic impact of the airport continues to just show very strong numbers for Gilbert and the East Valley communities. Study session, before I give the adjournment, anything else we missed? See you Thursday night. Adjourn.